All right, we want to go ahead and welcome everyone tonight to the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, March 28th, 2016. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Would somebody like to read the approval of the agenda?
I move that the agenda Monday, March 28th, 2016, Board of Education may be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second.
Great, thank you. And this is a roll call vote.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Westerkamp?
Aye.
And with that, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting with a public hearing. We have information BA 16091-02. It's a public hearing for the 2016-17 Revised Modified Year-Round School Year Calendar. And Dr. Buck, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I can just give you the kind of quick overview. So we would've, you would've seen the year-round calendar, I think it's in November, and passed that to meet a deadline for the Department of Ed. In the interim, we've passed the calendar that affects the majority of the students. And now what this calendar is doing is going back and aligning what was passed a month or so ago with what happened in November. And so essentially, what it's doing is bringing those two things into congruence. And I know Val has met with some staff from Taylor, so they've seen and kind of worked through the details of that. And then if you have questions beyond that, Val is here.
All right. And the public hearing is open, so are there any comments from the public on the calendar? You can go ahead and approach the podium. Just give us your name and address. We'll allow up to five minutes for comments. Thank you.
My name is Erin Evan-Schwarz. My address is 3914 Richard Drive Northeast. I'm a parent in our district, but I'm here tonight as a teacher at Taylor. And our calendar means a lot to our kids. And the most important thing is that our kids feel safe when they come to school and they feel like they are where they need to be. And when we were approached a month or so ago about potentially losing this calendar from now until July and not starting in July, that sent our staff into an uproar. And I can only imagine what it would be like for our children and families to hear that our calendar is changing effective basically immediately. Our kids depend on whatever happens at school to keep their lives in check and to make sure that they are developing academically, emotionally, and physically, psychologically. We think about our whole child and not just the academic piece. It's, sorry, I'm nervous. You know, we have seen and heard and talked to the staff that, you know, down the line, we may not be able to have this calendar. Ideally, what we've seen and what from our research, and we've had staff who have done research for grad school on the year-round schedule, ideally, there'd be more schools in the district on this schedule. But for now, I'm just asking you for this next year at least, approve our calendar. And if we're going to discuss changing it, let's start earlier next year. Thank you.
Further comments? Are there any other comments about the calendar in this open hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that hearing. We have another public hearing. It's BA 16222. It's the public hearing for the 2016-17 Taylor Elementary School Window and Door Replacement Project. And I don't know if there's any comments needed for this. Are there any public comments on that project? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Next, I'll turn over to you, Dr. Buck, for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, lots of great news tonight, thank you. So I'm pleased to share that the work of the Theory of Action Task Force has resulted in a draft of key priorities and belief statements for the district, and this is available on the website. The group's now looking for broader stakeholder input through a video that we've posted. During the video presentation, it's known as EdPuzzle, there's multiple opportunities for participants to enter questions and comments in an accompanying text box. The process can take individuals as few as 10 minutes or as much time as they need, depending on the extent of the feedback they'd like to provide. And the video and input will be available through Monday, April 4th. So basically, you get on there, you load in a username and address, and then you watch a video and give intermittent feedback. So we're excited about that work and ready for folks to give us some feedback if you have that opportunity. I also want to remind families about the opportunity for students to attend one of the district's two magnet schools. The Johnson Steam Academy and Kenwood Leadership Academy are accepting applications until 4:00 PM, I'm guessing that's Central Standard Time, on Friday, April 1st, for the 2016-17 school year. Because space is limited at both schools, students will then be accepted through a blind lottery process. Families may apply and enter the lottery by completing the online application found on the district website at www.c-r.k12.ia.us. Certainly, we know that excellent educational opportunities are available in all of our district schools. The magnet schools support our commitment to providing families with choices. Great news, Washington High School has been recognized as a leading exemplar of college and career readiness by the Iowa State ACT Council. Based on its continued commitment to serving the diverse needs of its student population and focusing on the end goal of college and career readiness for all, Washington was named as Iowa's first winner of the College and Career Transition Award. And then one other good news piece, I think I saw her here tonight, did I see Autumn here tonight? Yeah. Hi, Autumn. Yeah. So I want to congratulate Roosevelt Principal Autumn Pino on being named the 2016 Iowa Middle Level Principal of the Year by School Administrators of Iowa. She's been humble in accepting the honor, calling it a tribute to the teachers and staff, and noting how the school community strives to celebrate diversity and inclusion, foster innovation, and embrace a growth mindset on behalf of students. Certainly, her leadership has been key to that. Can we take a little moment here to just clap a little for Autumn? She's going to send me a text later for thanking me for doing that, I'm sure. With that, congratulations, Autumn.
That's terrific. All right, are there any board reports tonight? Any comments? Gary?
Legislative update. Of course, as we all know, the House and Senate passed a 2.25 supplemental state aid for next year. They haven't acted on the following year like they should have. We're still waiting, holding our breath on what that will be. We met with, we being area superintendents and school board members and other educational entities, met with legislators on Friday afternoon. And the other two key legislative pieces, as far as education goes, are still, we're waiting to hear. There would be the, whether there'll be funding for the assessment, a new assessment piece that's been recommended by the Department of Ed. And the other would be funding for the third grade reading and retention summer program. As we know, we do have a grant for the summer reading program which will help us for next year, but that's just a one-year shot. The assessment program, if that were to go through and not be funded, would be quite a burden for our already tight budget for next year. No indication on what will happen, but the message was sent to legislators that if they're not going to fund, then put those pieces on hold, at least for a year. We just can't afford to move forward without funding.
Great, thanks, Gary. Appreciate that. Any other board reports? I had a couple of items, so we received information from one of our partners, the Boys and Girls Clubs, that they have a Young Mentors Movement Meeting on tomorrow night, March 29th, from 5:15 to 7:00 at the Geonetic Building. So I'm assuming all parties are invited, including the school board, to be there to support Young Mentors Movement. So that might be kind of exciting to be part of. Gary and Keith and I will have a chance to go to the NSBA Conference in a couple of weeks here and accept the award for the Magna National Awards Program for the Iowa Big Program. So that'll be kind of exciting for us, I think, on behalf of the school district. We have a special board meeting time on, it'll be on Tuesday, April 12th, at 5:30. And so instead of a Monday meeting, several of us will be gone at that conference. This meeting will be on April 12th, and as I recall, that's mainly focused on the budget issue, so I think that that's all that I had on my calendar. So unless there's anything else, we'll go ahead and open it up to a public comment. I have a few requests here. First one, Janelle McGovern. Again, just state your name and your address, and you'll have up to five minutes, and Laurel Day here will kind of keep time and remind you when five minutes is up.
Thank you. My name is Janelle McGovern. My address is 2207 Fox Trail Drive Northeast. I'm here today as the president of the Cedar Rapids PTA Council. And over the past month, I had an opportunity to go to the National PTA Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. Got to meet with a lot of people from across the country and learn some very valuable information. In previous meetings, I have been asked how we can improve the relationship between our school board members and our parents, improve that line of communication, and really work to foster that relationship. And so when given an opportunity, I asked people from across the country how they did that sort of thing. And the city PTA would like to ask the school board to work with us on a program that would essentially assign schools to each one of our school board members, to invite you to come to the PTA meetings. And I have to say that it would probably be a multi-year commitment, because the first time you guys come to a meeting, no one's going to be there. I mean, you're going to get the same five or six people, but what we would really like to do is work with you and encourage that relationship to grow and expand. And so we are asking that you guys meet us maybe a little more than halfway to get started, and come to where parents are, and speak to them about what's going on with our district, what the needs are, what our challenges are, what you guys are doing, and what is important. And also to hear from them really honestly, in their home school, what is going on so that you have a better idea of where parents are, and you don't have to ask focus groups or one person, or people who might be able to make a meeting here and there. That's my proposal for building that relationship and fostering that relationship in the future. Thank you.
In touch with that idea. And next we have Lisa Delauie. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lisa Delauie, 1701 Ice Street Southwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I'm here also as a city PTA member, and I would like to invite you for a little different program, which is all the same. We are going to be doing PTA at the Paramount on April 26th, and I would like to invite the board members, and I'm, we'll be sending out invites to the school administration and the PTAs, local PTAs. It's supposed to be a night about coming together, just as to enjoy a night and have a good time. Also, to, I guess I'm a big believer in not just the arts, but also giving families opportunities to engage in those things. And the Paramount has been very graceful for us, letting us come in for a night, getting free tours and different things like that, letting people that don't normally have a chance to stop in or go to a show. So I want to make sure that, you know, we could get a good presence there. I'd also ask that the board, if they would like to join us on this venture and maybe help support us a little bit. You know, I do see other things on here, like desserts and free, I am working under our prizes, they're going to be good, but I'd like to see, you know, to, maybe we could collaborate and work on something together. But I definitely am inviting everybody to this event.
Great, thank you. And we did get the flyer as well, so...
Yes, I already, you will be getting an invite too, but I had the save-the-day flyer first.
Awesome. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right. And I think that that was it for public comments. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member would like to pull for comment or questions? Seeing none? The motion for the consent agenda?
There is no motion. It would just be an approval of, move to approve.
Could somebody like to move to approve the agenda? Consent agenda?
I hope that we approve the agenda set forth.
Second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Westerkamp?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to learning and leadership. And first, we have the innovative program update from Dr. Pickering, so, welcome.
Thank you, President Laberty and board. I'm actually going to flip it around, I'm going to start with learner-centered assessment.
Okay.
Because I've learned, never follow kids when they talk, so I'm going to get this one. I'd like to bring up with me Kathy Slayman and Autumn Pino to help with this part of it a little bit. So just to review, learner-centered assessment in other districts, they might be calling it standards-based grading. We have been piloting it and moving it forward in different pockets throughout the district. Again, this is important for us because we believe in personalized learning. And personalized learning includes how do you evaluate students on their personal skills and where they're at, as opposed to doing it in relationship to some score, percentage, and so forth. So I really appreciates that belief that we have a growth mindset and that this is about learning, not necessarily about piling up points or credits and those kind of things. And again, part of our overall strategy. Our current state, we have two middle schools, Roosevelt and McKinley, who opted last year to implement it fully across the building. As you would predict, it's been, it's been hit and miss, and we're learning and doing things really well and other things not so well. The progress has been uneven. Anytime you make a change that's a philosophical change and not just a technical one, you can expect those things to happen. We have many middle school and high school teachers throughout the district working on this approach, and we've been calling them together and having them meet and talk to us and help us figure out the best path forward, try to eliminate some of the practices we know are poor, and to elevate the practices that are proving successful. And so I'd like to introduce Kathy Slayman. We've had Kathy on assignment with us since about December, and her job has been to support and facilitate this progress at both middle schools and with any teacher who's looking to do this. So I'm going to ask her to just share a story or two from her experiences.
Thank you. I think I've very much appreciated being in this position because it gives me a more global view of what's going on with this. Having worked with standards-based grading in an, for yourself, isolated, you're all in the trenches and you're working on it, and it, being in this position has expanded my view. I really commend the staffs of both of those schools for taking that big leap to this because it is the right work. It is hard work, but they are working through it. Dr. Pickering mentioned that it's been a little bit uneven, and we have had some of that. But it's kind of one of those things, when I talk about it, either, even if you're ready to have a baby or not ready to have a baby, you could be as ready to have a baby as you thought you could ever be, you're still not ready to have that baby once it comes, right? Because there's so many things you don't know. Also, within where we're working, we are moving teachers forward in their thinking and in their conversations about evaluating students more objectively. And we get increased implementation and focus on the standards, which is really a nice piece for this because that's what it's about, the learning for these kids. And the other things don't come into play. And so that helps support the equity work that we're working on, and it also supports for the students, one of the biggest things that I see is that there is now more a sense of hope because of the fact that you don't take an assessment and, oh, I failed. There is always hope to do better. And I think Autumn can speak to that too, conversations with the students. So in our current state, we are, we are moving forward, and we have nice pieces to go to speak to for that.
And who better than the middle school principal of the year to share an update on what does this look like at the school site? So I'm going to ask Autumn just to talk about what's going well and what they're working on and what next year might look like.
So like they said, it's been a work in progress, but I can tell you, I came to Roosevelt five years ago, and at that time, some staff members were piloting this work. And it's so neat to have philosophy shift building wide and watching this flourish. So just to tell you kind of where we've been, and we talk about the positives and some uneven points, I think no matter what, when you implement philosophical change and belief system change, everybody's still on a continuum. So what happens is, we're still implementing, and we do it in a way that we try to do it with fidelity, but we have, for example, Kathy Slayman going into grade books and giving feedback to teachers. I want to commend our staff because to have somebody go in your grade book and provide you feedback is kind of an intense thing for most teachers, but they've been really receptive. And we talk about the only way to do this with fidelity is to have those checkpoints and accountability points. So it's, again, just want to commend our staff, and I want to commend McKinley's as well, but obviously, I'm more fond of Roosevelt's staff, so I'm giving them compliments. I would also say that from a student side of things, this is where I kind of melt during these experiences or could get emotional. When you watch a student on a continuum over a specific standard, and you hear them talking about where they're at and where they hope to be, those are growth mindset statements that we're encouraging from staff, but also those students are reflective in owning their learning. So when I watch that in the classroom, or when I have those exchanges in the office, even when a student's in trouble and we're talking about academics, when they can talk about the standard, tear it apart, and talk about how they're going to move to the right, that's pretty powerful. The other thing I want to bring out is sometimes I think at Roosevelt, we get a depiction of we're only challenging or supporting those students that are lower on the continuum. We've been pushing teachers this year, and there's been some emails and meetings and things about the fact that we need to move everybody to the right. So if a student meets expectations or exceeds, we still need to push because that's what we're learning. We're a center for learning for all students. And so those are things that are interesting because I think sometimes Roosevelt gets that depiction, but we're constantly pushing. And so I think that's neat because no longer is it a packaged grade, it's taking a look at a specific skill and standard and just moving students. When you have those exchanges, that's what we're all about, so that's been really powerful as a principle. I didn't go too long, did I?
So our next steps for next year is we're going to continue at McKinley and Roosevelt, offer them more professional development, and keep honing that and getting the things that need standardized, standardized for that approach. Kathy's been working a lot with Power School and finding ways that make it more parent-friendly, more teacher-friendly, more standards-based grading-friendly. And so we're going to be able to implement that and get that ready for the fall, which should help tremendously. And we're going to continue to offer support and opportunities to learn and have conversation about what this looks like moving forward into the high school. So with that, we'll take any questions you might have.
Gary?
Thank you. So a lot of us know about learner-centered assessments, but some of us don't. Could you just give a very brief description of moving from a grade assessment to an LCA?
Sure. The core difference is traditionally, school is based on, especially the secondary, tends to be based on points. You do homework, you get 10 points. You take a test, you get 30 points. You do extra credit, you get five points. You turn in your homework on time, you might get a point. Those kind of things. And then you take all those points and you average them up, and you determine a grade. Standards-based grading, learner-centered assessment focuses on what is it they're supposed to learn? What are the standards? And let's make sure that they know those standards. And so rather than grading homework and extra credit, homework and extra credit are opportunities for students to learn and get feedback from their teacher about what they know, what they need to work on. And so all of the assessments and that are geared toward, does this student know the standards? And if they do, then they get the A or the B, as opposed to, well, I got a bunch of points, or I piled up extra credit, or worse, I was sick for a week and I never got caught up, and so I got punished in the grade book because I couldn't get my assignments in. So it's really a fundamental shift towards, towards focus on the standards in the learning.
And then I had another question about, when you talk about community, tell me what you're thinking about when you're talking about involving the community more.
Yeah, we've had conversations with parents and staff and teachers and students, and so as we move forward into the summer and fall, I envision us pulling together groups of parents and beginning to have a larger conversation about what this can look like. It gets, it gets dicier when you get to high school because then all of a sudden, GPA and what's going to happen at college, and will they accept it, all those things come into play. And we just need to keep having those conversations and deal with any of the concerns and make sure we have solid responses and plans in place for them.
Nancy?
You had mentioned you're doing some things that are, you're doing well and some that you're doing not so well. What are the things that are not going well?
Yeah, guys can jump in on this. Couple of things, I would say the thing that hasn't, that's been the most challenging is that there's a lot of different ways that we do traditional grading, but we're all just so used to those ways that we don't notice that they're very different from teacher to teacher. When you move to this approach, it becomes very obvious how different teachers determine standards and so forth. And that inconsistency's been a problem for kids and for parents. And so we're trying to find, where's the, where's that happy medium place between mandating that certain things happen this way and giving teachers the professional freedom to make the calls they need to make?
Gary?
You said this is trying to reach all students. What happens to, for the student that meets the standard early in the curriculum?
I missed the last part.
Okay, it's, what happens when a student more quickly achieves a standard? Then what happens with that student? Where, what do they do?
So we have levels within the standards where they meet the standard. There's also exceeding the standard. And then there would be, and it comes in a variety of forms, whether it would be extending, going beyond. We've also talked, as we move forward, once you meet the standard, then you would move on to your next standard, moving forward there. But the exceeding can take forms of whether you're combining two standards together to solve a particular problem, real-world applications, those kinds of things then go to, if you've met the standard, then to stretch the student. And what Autumn was talking about, when we have kids who are there at that meeting point, we want to stretch them to reach and grow and be able to exceed the standard.
Likewise, then what happens when a student fails to meet the standard?
If a student fails to meet the standard, then there are marked for an RTI, Response to Intervention, section to refocus, relearn, reassess that standard. So if they haven't met the standard, then there's safety nets in place to get them where they're acquiring that standard. Standards are also revisited all throughout the year, so it's a continuum of learning. So you don't just learn solving, finding slope of a line in October and then never revisit it again. So there's continuing to revisit the standards.
I was just going to, I was just going to touch on, in the last two weeks as examples on exceeding, I've had emails from teachers that have asked for a meeting about stretching some students that already exceeded. One example would be from the option program, where I had a staff member say they're exceeding in this area, and there were probably 10 students, and she was reaching out to say, I need to be connected to high school LA teachers, I've got to figure this out, but we've got to stretch them the last nine to 10 weeks. And so a group of us came together and talked about that. As far as on the family side, the thing I like about this, and I mean this respectfully, it does put more pressure on the teachers, I mean that in a very respectful way, in that we're taking a look at the standard, and so now we keep saying, in that report home, we can honestly say we're giving you our best effort to help that student meet expectations on that standard. So there's pressure on everybody, the student and the teacher, in a very specific way because it's linked to a skill or standard now versus this global overarching F or C or A, if that makes sense.
Other questions? All right, we appreciate your time tonight. This is great, and looking forward to keeping these conversations going as more schools come on board. Thank you. Trace, it's the Dr. Pickering Show. Trace, it's the Dr. Pickering Show. Go for it. It looks like you brought some friends with you tonight.
Yeah, we got a few people in the crowd here tonight. Want to provide an innovation update and who better to talk about the innovations and how they're affecting the learner than the learners themselves. So we're going to, everybody's going to be as fairly brief, but briefly highlight Johnson Steam Academy Magnet School, the Roosevelt Option, the Jefferson Option, that's going to be rebranded with a new name, they'll share with you in a bit, the Metro Steam Academy and Iowa Big. So we'll kick it off with Candy Lynch and Johnson Steam Academy.
Thanks so much for having us tonight. And as Dr. Pickering said, the voice of the children matters more than anything. So I'm going to say very little, other than to give you brief introductions. We have with us two fourth graders, Zoe and Shaleah. And I just want to give a shout out to Kyle, who was also planning to come, but he ended up with a fever and had to stay home, so we feel bad for him. He was excited to be here. And our magnet coordinator, Cassidy Rankin. So I will turn it over directly to them because I know we have limited time.
Thank you very much. For those of you that don't know, we are Johnson Steam Academy. We are a magnet school. So we're a steam magnet school, science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. And we provide students a hands-on, minds-on learning approach. So we have a lot of cross-graded, cross-curricular learning opportunities for these students. So as Candy mentioned, we have some fourth graders here who are going to really share their story and the learning that has been happening at Johnson. So this is some of the photos of the exciting things that have happened this year. We have a Facebook page too, that you can keep up to date with, that we try to share our story that way. But we also do our best to integrate the 21st century skills into our learning. So the steam lab is one of the places that this happens. And so these two girls are going to talk about a learning lesson that they've participated in, in the steam lab, that also they took the learning from their classroom and use a steam lab as the place for them to create. So I'm going to pass it over to them.
My name is Shaleah and I'm a fourth grader at Johnson Steam Academy. I like Johnson Steam Academy because we get to learn about science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. We go to school, we go to the steam lab to create and build things. The steam lab is filled with a bunch of cool supplies and we get to pick out whatever supplies we want to use for our project. We plan our projects before we start making it. We use the design process. In social studies, we are learning about the progressive era and about tenement housing and how bad they were back then. And the inside of the tenement housing, there are two people sleeping on the bed and clothes on top of, on the top hanging because when they, they didn't have no, when they washed their clothes, they didn't have no dryer or a washing machine or no electricity. I'm proud of myself because I thought I couldn't do this, but then I just kept trying. When I'm building stuff, it helps me learn, me learn. Never doubt yourself because if you do, you would never get to do that thing you said you can't do. I couldn't have done this without the best teacher ever, Ms. Murphy.
My name is Zoe and I'm a fourth grader at Johnson Steam Academy. I like Johnson Steam Academy because I like hands-on learning and getting to use different materials or electronics. Hands-on learning is much more interesting than just reading out of a book. It's also much more fun. I feel like I learn better when I get to create my own projects or themes of what we are studying. I think it brings out creativity in us. This is our latest project, tenements. As you can see, it is made of cardboard boxes and other materials we have in our steam lab. We were trying to create a scene from when they had tenements because we are studying the progressive era and tenement living. Because of the projects and others, because of this project and others, I have more opportunity to be creative and learn.
Can we give them a round of applause? These are just two of our amazing students. A lot of our students, all of them have really great stories to share about exciting learning lessons that they've been going through this year. So we also couldn't be where we are without the support of many people, including our parents. And we have a variety of parents who have shared their support for us verbally and also in written communication with us. And this is just a comment from a lottery parent that we've had. But we also have feedback from our neighborhood parents as well. So we have a wide variety of stakeholders who are really supporting us and helping us, as well as community members as well. So we have a student engagement survey that we sent out this year. We don't have any baselines because it's brand-new, but we are administering it three times this year. And so we've already given it twice, we'll give it one more time. But we're hoping to continue to maintain and of course, we want to grow this percentage. So these are just three of the questions from the survey, but I'm proud to go to this school. There's also, I feel that what I'm learning in school is important, and this is really important to us. We want them to be able to transfer their knowledge from school to even the next grade to then high school and then to the community, which is why our community partnerships are so important for them to say like, oh, I'm learning this in first grade so that when I become an engineer, I know that I can use this knowledge. And the next question is, my assignments are interesting to me. So we really want to keep them relevant to what the kids want to learn and we really get that personalized learning and that opportunity to make it matter to them. And then we just want to end with some feedback. So through these student engagement surveys, one of our favorite things that we love is the student feedback at the end. So at the end of the survey, every student writes a comment about what they like about school. And so it's really just a great opportunity to see what they feel. So I'm going to have these two girls read these quotes. They're not actually theirs, but they're speaking for the voice of, they're being their peers' voice. So I'm going to let them step back up.
My favorite part of coming to JSA is being able to be here during the changes. I have been here for all five years. It's really cool to see all the changes. I also love having a steam lab.
I love the steam lab because it's where you can create what you like and it's where you can get, you can let your imagination go wild. We might get challenging homework, but that's okay because our teacher wants us to strive in excellence in everything we do and we will never give up on our dreams.
So thank you to those of you who have supported us and just have been a part of our story. We would love for you to attend our steam showcase at Theater Cedar Rapids on April 19th. It's a Tuesday, it's at 7:00 PM. Information will be going out to our Facebook page, but we'll be able to share a little bit more about what's been happening inside at Johnson Steam Academy. So thank you all for your help.
Awesome, thank you. Trace, did you want to do questions at the end for everyone or?
At the end, okay.
All right. Good job, you guys, thank you.
All right, next up is Roosevelt. One real quick, while they're coming up here, very proud of the steam academy in year one. I would put them up against the second and third-year magnet schools in terms of what they've accomplished. It's just been amazing, amazing staff, amazing leadership there. Next up is Roosevelt Option, they are in year two. And we have Jess Camacho and a couple of students and a parent.
Hi, I am Jess Camacho. I am the science teacher with Roosevelt Option. We thought the best way to explain our success was, were to bring you actual students that have shown a lot of growth and success. So we have two students and a parent. Manoa is our student this year and then we have Cece, who was here last year and has now moved on to the Jefferson Option. And then Cece's mom is also going to present to us as well.
My name is Manoa, as she said. At the beginning of the year, I felt nervous about Option because I never had a different way of learning before. In classes I took as a seventh grader, I didn't do well, especially in science, because they use big words and we didn't really learn how to use those words. When I got in Option and started to learn on my own, I thought it would be difficult. But as the year went on, I found I really liked working on canvas and technology in my own space. I also found the projects helped me understand vocabulary better. The thing I liked most was being able to choose what type of project I wanted to work on to better understand my skills. I've also been able to become a positive leader. I won the first Option election and here, and here's an example of a, Manoa money. This money, students can be able, they can earn it by completing the work. And looking forward, I think being in Option will help me in high school because I learned how to organize myself in getting my work done and how I am in charge of my own learning. I hope other students get the same opportunities I did in Option.
Thank you.
My name is Cecilia Bonacchieri and I'm from the Blended Academy, currently a ninth grader. Last year I was a part of the Roosevelt Option program. In the beginning, it was stressful and difficult, but the projects changed that. For example, a couple of students and I got to go to Kinston Hill where we worked with the people there and we played games with them, we made sure that they were happy and we just entertained them. Something that we had last year was something called brain break, where students get about 15 minutes off their work and just socialize with their friends, go aside and get some air. And we get to learn on our own pace. We did not go by the bells in school. And I felt like that was a good thing because we didn't have to rush to classes or worry about being late to class because all of our classes were pretty much connected. And I had great teachers that were really nice and were willing to help me with anything that I needed help with. And this year, I am a part of the Blended Academy. What I liked about the Blended Academy is that we have great teachers that are really helpful. And I'm serious about my grades this year. I have a 3.94 GPA, which I am really proud of because this is like the greatest GPA I've ever had, like my whole life. And I'm more confident in what I do and I concentrate on the goals that I set up for myself. The teachers are trying to get students interested in community outreach and I try to advance myself at my own pace so I can be able to work on the projects that they have for us to do. And overall, it has been a great experience being a part of the Roosevelt and the Blended Academy. And thank you for your time. And I would like my mom to come up here so she can talk more about how this helped me a lot. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josephine Gabire. My daughter's Cecilia, but my English is not perfect, so I'm going to try it. I'm so proud of her because I have seen big, big improvement. Just say, I want to like say thank you Roosevelt Option. I want to say a thank you to Jefferson too, because Cecilia was, last year, she was very, very, very behind in math. So I remember when I was doing math lab, I had a conversation with my teacher, then I asked her, I asked him that if there's any way I can get help with my daughter. Then he told me that his wife used to teach to Roosevelt. Then she, he was like, okay, I'll ask my wife, then I'll see if I can get any help. Then like next week later, then he came up with the answer. Then he told me that my wife said, you can go to Roosevelt, then ask her about Option. Yeah, I went there, then I met with her teacher, but I don't remember his name. He was so nice and they decided to put her in Option. So Cece, she got in Option, he's doing well. He's not doing well only in math. He's like, step up for everything. Thank you, teachers.
Thanks to all of you guys from Roosevelt.
It's good to win the presidency, you get your face on a.
Absolutely. I'm going to ask later what we get to spend that on.
Yeah. Next up is the Jefferson Option. Cece was the one that got to announce that their name has changed, so if the Jefferson folks who are presenting want to come on up. The Jefferson Option is also in its second year. It expanded this year from three teachers to six and from roughly 80 students to about 180, or about 160, so.
Hello, my name is Nate. I am in the Jefferson Blended Academy. I am currently in ninth grade. Everyone here is going to tell you about the Blended Academy, probably their favorite part. All I have is my favorite part because that's all I can think of when I think of the Blended Academy. Personally, what I love about it is that you get to move at your own pace. You get to pace yourself and learn at your own pace. And I believe that by doing so, the student can really connect with their self. Because back in middle school, the teachers never communicated. They never talked, they never did anything with each other. But with the Blended Academy, all three teachers of my last class, they all talk, they all can teach each other subjects. Not the best at each other's subjects, but they try, they try. And that's what I love about it because you can really indulge yourself within your own learning. You can get the understanding. So it's not just the teacher that knows the student, it's you that knows yourself. Because a student can say, oh yeah, I know my learning, I know where I'm at. But you can really see where you're at. And speaking of advancing, if you advance in a class, you can start working on, let's say, for example, let's say I'm advanced in LA and I continue on. I can get help in math, science or anything. That's that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bran Range and I'm a ninth grader in the Blended Academy. So when I first got into the Blended Academy, I was like, oh no, I did terrible middle school. And then I saw that this academy was actually an opportunity for me to see different points of view. And so, and like Nate said, if you excel in all your classes, you can do these things like projects. The Blended Academy is like a project-based learning, so once you're done with all your work, you can start these projects. We've done a few and people have started some. Earlier in the year, we did a gun violence panel where we brought in police officers and important people to come and talk to us and ask, and we could ask them questions about gun violence. And currently, I am working on a project, we are trying to make an apparel store at our school. I like these projects because they show, they give us these opportunities to communicate with the community. We get to call places in the community and ask them for their help in our projects. We also get to interact with other students. It's because we make these groups and we work on these projects together and we can ask each other for other input. And we just learn real-life skills. It's an amazing opportunity to do these projects. So yeah, and when we do these projects, we, before, we get to have our own preferences, like advancing at your own pace. We get teacher help, we get student, you can ask students that excelled ahead of you or ones that are at the same pace as you. But you can also ask teachers, teachers also give you help and they help you try to advance and they give you tools to advance at your own pace. But we also get internet access, so we have the Canvas that we use. And we use this and we find our kind of preference in how fast we go and how fast we learn. And it's a great opportunity to be in the Blended Academy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cade Nornman and I am a freshman in the Blended Academy. Last year, we got a grant to get Surface Pros for the Options Program. With the Surface Pros, it allows the students to advance at their own pace because we have constant access to Canvas and all the materials online that we need to advance at our own paces. Other classes that don't have these, they don't have the luxury to advance at their own pace because the teacher can't teach so many different subjects or points in the curriculum to everybody that needs it. But when we have the Surface Pros, we can get the information that we need either on Canvas or on a different site where we can access it. The ratio to students per Surface Pro downstairs in the Options Program is about two to one. So not everyone can have one at once, but a lot of the times, there's classes that we don't need them. Right now, the only class that I need one, the whole class, is in science and math. I just move at my own pace. In LA, I do the same thing. Yeah, it really just allows us to move at the pace that we want or just stay with the teachers. All depends on, I guess, the pace that you can go at yourself. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I am Lilian Price and I am a ninth grader in the Blended Academy. And one of my favorite parts of what we do is that I am currently working on a project and I am able to do this because of us moving at our own pace. And so I try to advance in each subject as much as I can and it still leaves me with enough time to work on my project, which is involving the greenhouse and the garden. And I am working with my classmate Jackie. And me and her are growing vegetables to either donate or supply our cafeteria with food. And then we are also growing flowers to sell to our teachers at our school. And everything with our project is we get to communicate with lots of people in the community and other schools. And we got actually a HIV grant for $1,000 this year that me and my classmate Jackie had written ourselves and we were very proud of that, that all of the work that we put into was paying off and we're doing really well with our project. So it's just nice to be able to keep up with our schoolwork and advance even more and do really well while also being able to make a difference with not only our school but our community. So thank you for your time.
My name is Bart Coulter.
I'm Pira Hammonds. We were students in the Blended Academy last year and we excelled through our classes so we could start our project. The project we chose was Blue Zones and we worked to get Jefferson designated as a Blue Zones school and we actually became one of the first high schools in the nation to get this Blue Zones designation. Some of the things we did through the Blue Zones project was we implemented a school garden and we brought in some fresh local lettuce into the cafeteria. And we made a healthy snack bar that students could choose as an option instead of using the vending machines during the day.
So personally, we felt that we gained some life skills through the Blue Zones project. Some big steps for us were as simple as emailing and calling and setting up meetings with health officials and school representatives and companies. We were placed into the Blue Zones project due to what career path we went to follow in the future. Other projects last year, there was a 5K Doggy Dash that they held at Knoll Ridge and the money went to the Humane Society. And a couple of students did an anti-bullying campaign at Jefferson. And we have the apparel store that started last year that is continuing this year.
As sophomores, we found it a challenge to go back to a normal-based learning after having the unique opportunity of our one-on-one time with our teachers and the student-based learning that we received as you could excel through your classes and your curriculum at your own pace.
This year as sophomores, we continue to gain help from our teachers in our classes this year, which is very helpful. We can ask them about anything in any of our subjects. We feel very grateful to have been in the Blended Academy last year and we hope that it is successful for others as it was for us. Thank you for having us.
I think I was picking up on a theme there, how about you? The students certainly enjoy working at their own pace and I know the staff at Jefferson tell us that the majority of the kids are getting through the curriculum by mid-April, May. And so they're able to go dive deeper and get really into projects and even start looking at what next year's curriculum looks like for them. Next up is the Metro Steam Academy with Dr. Grant and I believe... Is it Brock, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Pickering. Thank you for having us this evening. We have the proud, esteemed pleasure to be here with Mr. Brock Cormann, who's gonna talk a little bit about his experience in the Metro Steam Academy. Before he comes up, I wanted to show just briefly, these are some of the photos that represent some of the projects and some of the blended learning opportunities students are having at Metro High School. Please follow us on Facebook and on Twitter and on Periscope. Are we on Instagram too? Instagram, Snapchat coming soon. But the Metro Steam Academy's primary focus has been to get students involved in the process of entrepreneurship, manufacturing, engineering, design, and use that in a way that's meaningful for them. And so a lot of different projects, a lot of different ideas that come out of that space. This is the first year that we've had this in the building and it's due to a lot of different partnerships, community partners and business partners and we're very appreciative of those individuals. It's been to redesign the learning space to fit that need. And so it's going very, very well. And I think the most profound piece is the efficacy piece for students. Them getting connected to school and feeling that their learning is very meaningful for them and their lives. So Brock, I'm not gonna take any more of your time, I'm gonna let you come speak to the board.
Hello, my name is Brock Cormann. I'm a senior at Metro High School and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the Metro Steam Academy and what it means to me. I would say that mainly the Metro Steam Academy means two things to me. The first being flexibility. Not only flexibility in what you're working on, who you're working on it with, when you're working on it, or even where you're working on it. But also flexi... Flexibility on where you're working on it, who you're working on it with, and when you're working on it gives you the choice to have total control over your learning environment. And I'm sure if you compare the work done by students who have control over their learning environment to those who do not have control over their learning environment, such as those in standard class, most standard classes, you'll find that those who have control over their learning environment do better work, faster, and most importantly, happier. Or at least I can personally say that's true from my case. And the second part that the Metro, I would say the Metro Steam Academy means to me is diversity. Not only diversity in where you're going and the people you meet and the connections that you make, but diversity in the work that you do. For example, right now at the Metro Steam Academy, we have a group of students making art out of old pallets. We have a group of students who just launched a weather balloon in the stratosphere. We have a group of students who are collecting styrofoam trays to help re-educate people on the dangers of polystyrene. And we actually have a group of students who are working to build a hydroponic lab right now. So yeah, there's diversity in the people you're meeting, the connections you're making in the community, and also in what you're doing at the school. Thank you.
So once again, we just thank you for having this time to kind of explain more about the Metro Steam Academy. We still think it's very imperative and important that the students at Metro understand that they're valued. And more importantly, it's important for the community to understand that there's real learning taking place at Metro High School. We don't consider ourselves to be an alternative school when it comes to high-level rigor and that kind of work is happening in the building. So thank you very much for your time this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, and I need to, Maddie Price is here with us as well. She didn't want to come up here, so I'm gonna make sure that I embarrass her in front of everybody right now. So Maddie Price is with us as well.
Hey, last up, the Iowa Big program. Iowa Big's in its third year. As you're aware, it's with Prairie High School as well as our four high schools. We have students from all those high schools plus Mount Vernon. They're going to, approximately a minute each, they're gonna share one element of their big journey here. So we'll start with Hannah.
Hi, so I'm Hannah Bertram, I'm a junior at Jefferson and I'm a first-year at Iowa Big. I'm just gonna give you guys kind of a brief overview of why I decided to join Iowa Big and why I love it so much. I definitely think for me, it was about exploration and self-discovery. Iowa Big has given me the opportunity to explore what I might be interested in and what I want to do for the rest of my life. That's kind of a crazy thing to tackle when you think about it, being seventeen. So that's definitely what it's done for me. Through Iowa Big, I've been able to do some projects that have provided some really cool opportunities, as you can see with all my pictures. I've had a lot of fun, so I really, really enjoy it. I feel more connected to my community, I feel more connected to my peers all over since multiple high schools are a part of Iowa Big. I definitely went from having kind of a negative view of Cedar Rapids to having a really positive view of one. I think a lot of you know those kids who are like, oh, I can't wait to graduate, get out of Cedar Rapids, I'm gonna go somewhere far away. Definitely that was me, but that's completely turned around and I love it here. So yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Erin Burish and I'm a senior at Kennedy High School and a second-year student at Big. When I first started Big, I was very introverted, I didn't have a lot of self-confidence and I certainly never saw myself as a leader. But when I came to Big, I was exposed to different students from different schools, projects, different passions I didn't even know I had. That really helped me see a lot in myself that I maybe like didn't give myself credit for. And I grew into the leader and the learner that I am today. And I'm incredibly proud of that. I always say that Big has completely transformed me. Just standing in front of a podium, I'm a little bit sick right now, so I kind of sound like that. But would terrify me before I came here and now it's something I'm asked to do like every other week, I swear. We talk so much. And I'm leading a project this year and I'm really proud of my work and I have a lot of ownership. And I've, yeah, grown into a leader and a learner that I'm really proud of, so.
I'm Callaryce Trueblood and I'm a junior at Kennedy High School and a second-year Big student. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the day in the life of a normal, well, a typical Big student. Most of the Big students go to their mothership, which is their high school, Kennedy, Washington, Jefferson, a little Big lingo for you. And we start out there and occasionally have partner meetings during school hours and we have to figure out how to make up all of our schoolwork, which we've gotten pretty used to. But it's been a really neat experience doing that. And then what I like to call a little transition period, I have Big after-school. So it's kind of like transitioning into work mode for me. And it's been like a really interesting experience because it's just you get to do real-world problems, solve real-world things in the community, solve problems, and just really get to know everybody in the community and really get out there and do something different, something most students don't get the chance to do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abby Murdock. I am a junior at Prairie High School and I am a second-year Big student. So I just want to talk a little bit about what Big offers you that you might not have available at every other school in Cedar Rapids. So as you can see pictured here, in the middle here is Jan Power. She's a counselor at the Prairie Crest Elementary. And so what my project focuses on and what we're working together is creating trauma-informed care in every high school. So with Hannah and Andrew, we had the opportunity to hold a Paper Tigers showing, not once but twice. And so we had around 400 attendance to both screenings and that was done not by teachers but by students. That was completely put together by ourselves, advertised by ourselves. The movie was acquired by us, so that was an amazing, amazing journey, I'm really proud of that. Pictured with me there is Senator Rob Hoag, we're on a first-name basis now. And this is Representative Art Stade. Also in the far right to me, you'll see Governor Branstad. We actually just recently had the opportunity to sit down with him for ninety minutes and kind of explained the objective of Big and the opportunities we've had. I would have never imagined that that would have been possible last year. And so seeing the opportunities that are available just in Cedar Rapids, like Hannah said, makes me want to stay even more and I'm just very proud of the opportunities offered in our community.
Hi, I'm Maya Gonlubon, I'm a first-year student at Iowa Big. And something that's really stressed to us at Iowa Big is how important community is and how important young people are in our community. So I'm the leader of a project this year, which is really exciting for me, called He Was at Cedar Rapids. And I have a passion for people and for visual arts and so we're using authentic storytelling and portrait photography to tell the stories of humans that we've been able to be introduced to in Cedar Rapids. And our project was started because of some of the disconnect that's been happening from community to community in Cedar Rapids. And so we're hoping by exposing the stories of the people and showing their faces in our city that we can show people that we're all more alike than different and that our city is amazing and filled with fantastic people. So yeah, we're just hoping to connect more and more people and I think this project will be really, really powerful. And I'm proud that my team, that I love, will really be able to come out of this with the skills they need to really form authentic relationships with other people, which I think everyone should be able to learn. And I'm really proud that I was presented with that opportunity at my age that I will be able to carry on these skills for a very, very long time. So yeah, Iowa Big means a lot to me. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Ailer. I'm a junior at Jefferson High School. This is my first year in the Iowa Big program and boy, has it been different than years past. Joining Iowa Big, it was different than I expected, but it's a good different. Preparing me for my secondary education going on to college, I have huge dreams. I hopefully want to go on to attend University of Washington or University of Michigan to get my degree in biomedical engineering. And then I want to go off to Johns Hopkins or Cornell University to get my MD in hopes of being a pediatric research doctor at St. Jude's Trophian's Hospitals in Nashville, Tennessee. And with that, that's a huge goal and so we have to have something to get me there. So originally I was told, make sure you do all the AP, you can get all the AP that you can get. And so that was one of my... all the AP that you can get, and so that was one of my big concerns getting in. Well, there's been a strange progression we're seeing throughout the universities, actually kind of dropping off some of the AP, and while it's still extremely important to have AP, I was needing something else to push me along to the rest of the way, to get me into these top universities, and that's where Iowa Big stepped in. So right now, I'm doing research at University of Northern Iowa on 26 new grape species in the state of Iowa, where the second-largest grape grower state in the nation, right behind California, real surprising, not all the people know that. And I'm now being offered research opportunities at University of Iowa, Cornell College, Simpson College, and other colleges and universities throughout the state, which is fantastic. And this is, it's a huge deal for me, when I take this on to my college resumes and applying for college, having my AP courses accompanied by this type of experience throughout Iowa Big is huge. It's to the point where I talk to admissions counselors, and they're like, "Holy crap, you're a high schooler, like, what is this?" And it's like, so yeah, it's, it's very, very, this program for me is extremely important when preparing for what's beyond high school.
Thanks to the Iowa Big staff. I know that took some time, that's five, five innovative projects, but we wanted to give you a quick update and let the kids talk to you about that. So you saw the major innovations in the district, there's innovations going on every day in classrooms all over, but you saw the major ones tonight, from elementary through middle school and high school. If you have any questions for me, or anybody that's left, be happy to answer.
Questions?
No, all of you did a great job, thank you. That was very informative, I truly enjoyed it. Thank you all.
Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Comment, go, go for it.
So I have to commend Dave Benson for hiring Trace Pickering into the district to change the traditional classroom experience into what all of you shared with us tonight, and the many more students that you represent in your school. So, thank you to Trace, and the staff that supports Trace, and the principals, and the teachers, because, just because he says it, and just because Brad Buck still supports it, and the board still supports it, doesn't mean it actually is gonna work in the classroom. So thank all of you for all of your efforts, and making a learning experience so valuable to our students that will provide years of success. And how heartwarming it is for us to hear that you love Cedar Rapids, and you discovered things about Cedar Rapids that you never would have discovered had you just gone through your traditional K-12 experience. So we hope you all come back, come back as teachers, come back as engineers, come back as administrators, and come back and have our community experience all of the things that you are bringing to us tonight. Thank you very much.
One, one final thing, if there's any other comments, Justin can get the slide back up. We are not done, we are gonna continue to innovate and move forward with models, and learn, and keep providing as much choice and options for our kids and our teachers that we can. So next year, up, on deck, as you know, the Kenwood Leadership Academy Magnet School will open up. Washington High School is starting a science and world language academy to try to provide additional support to students who should academically be doing better than they are through vertical tutoring, something called vertical tutoring, and much stronger mentoring and cohort grouping. The Jefferson option, as you learned tonight, becomes blended ed, and it's gonna expand into 10th grade, so the sophomores, you heard speak tonight, will, will have an option to stay in, that kind of option. Roosevelt is entering its planning stage, whether we get the Magnet School grant or not, Roosevelt will be our first middle school Magnet School a year from August. And finally, as it relates to the grant, some exciting news, it's taken some time to put it all together, but we're excited to announce that we're going to add a downtown Montessori elementary school to our grant application, and if, if we would get the federal grant, we would look to open a downtown school with a Montessori focus, so innovation's not gonna stop. Thank you.
And Trace, do you want to just comment briefly on the Montessori school? That would be for which grades?
Yes, we, we've been working with Cedar Valley Montessori School, who offer preschool and up through a kindergarten experience, so we are looking at opening first grade, first through fifth or first through sixth grade, in partnership with Cedar Valley.
Awesome. All right, now questions, since there was this last slide. All right, seeing none, thank you, Trace, and thanks to all of you for coming tonight and sharing all those great experiences. We're excited to, as Mary and others have said, to be able to support all of your work in those areas, so, thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and, and move on to the administrat, administration section, and Steve Graham, I think you're first up after all of that excitement, so as I told you from the beginning, you are being graded compared to the students that we just heard. Well, we'll give them one second, I guess, to get all of their fun items.
While they're leaving the room, I just want to say, this is really a tough act to follow, Trace, you are so right, but I have to say, it is, it is just a source of pride, to be associated with such fine, fine things going on, these young folks are up here, doing great things, it's just awesome, it just, it's just, it's just a very proud moment, so I'm, I'm just happy to be maybe a little part of that, from a financial sort of aspect, maybe helping direct those finite resources, as finite as they are, and they seem to be more finite, ever, ever so currently as they have been, so, awesome, awesome, awesome stuff.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, very good. Now the budget, right? Now the budget. And I recognize its place, it's been, it's been certainly an important part of what we do, this is the annual season for budgeting, we now know that the legislature has taken action, at least it hasn't been signed by the governor, but in all likelihood it will be, at a 2.25% SSA, and so everything you're going to see tonight is premised on a 2.25% SSA, so let's move on here. I'm not sure if I'm pressing the right button. Okay, so we have, again, two budget processes, we've got the certified budget process, we have the line item budget process, our focus tonight is on the certified budget process. On the 12th of April, that Tuesday is the magic day that will have for you that certified budget for your approval, the line item budget will go on yet for some time. And so tonight, after the presentation, I would ask the board to consider approving the publication of the proposed budget for fiscal '17, as well as a public hearing to be scheduled for the 12th of April, where we'll hear comments, and then presumably approve the certified budget for '17. So we have, again, as I said earlier, 2.25% SSA within the overall budget, we have revenues of 267, nearly 268 million, expenditures of 263 million, and a published tax rate of 1538, which is the same rate that we currently have, once it's published, you can't exceed that, and again, as I stated about a month ago at our last board meeting, we'll hold that levy rate at 1538, despite the fact that we have an additional 67 cents on that potential because of the expanded PEPLO levy that was approved in September of '14, moving from 67 cents to a dollar 34. So within that, we're, we're absorbing that and keeping that levy rate held at 1538. Interesting little pieces that I've added since the board packet regarding the impact of the rollback on residential property, we'll actually see a property tax decline from a school perspective of two-tenths of 1%, because of the ag property is up a little bit on rollback, we'll see a 3% increase in ag property, with commercial property being no change whatsoever. These are all with a $15.38 unchanged levy rate for fiscal '17. And you can see the levy rate, again, just perspective, historical perspective for the last 10 years, holding in fiscal '17 at $15.38, here's some comparability with the other 11 schools in Lynn County, to show where we lie in the continuum of second lowest for the current fiscal period. You've seen this chart a number of different ways over the last several months, the red bar in the center, orange bar in the center now, is this $2.3 million reduction necessary to balance our spending authority at approximately 2% of the overall budget, which is very, very slim, but it allows us to maintain a stable, very slim unspent balance with our $2.3 million reduction budget. This is assuming that we have a 3.5% overall compensation increase for fiscal '17, which is led by the second year of a two-year agreement with our teaching association at 3.5% total compensation increase. The unspent balance is in the orange, this is the spending authority measurement, and the green is essentially cash or fund balance, and you can see what's happening with our cash balance over time, we're going really up rapidly, and we're reaching 15% at the end of fiscal '17. For perspective, we can go to 20%, and then we're limited by law beyond that point, so we still haven't reached the maximum yet, but at the same time, we have a 2% spending authority reserve, and that is really where we're forced to make those decisions regarding reduced expenditures in order to maintain that 2% level of spending authority. Both of them are important measurements, but critically, the most important at this point is our spending authority measurement. So what's next? Again, as I said earlier, I will be asking the board to consider the, the motion of publishing the budget for '17, and scheduling that public hearing for the 12th of April, for the hearing to take place, and we would consequently certify the budget. So those are my formal comments, I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions?
I have a concern in getting much of other 15%, because that's money that we're collecting, we can't really spend, and in the past, political figures have been very critical of that, for saying, "You have this money, you're not spending it," they don't understand, so I'd just say that we need to really be sure we keep that number at a reasonable rate, and we're probably there.
Okay, good comment, thank you. Other comments? Gary?
Steve, is there anything that we can do with that levy rate that would give us a, more of a, a little bit more of a cushion, if in fact, I'm concerned about the, being burdened with the assessment piece from the state, the state assessment, I believe, Dr. Buck, I think I heard you say about 300,000 plus?
About a quarter million.
About a quarter of a million.
Still real money.
I think a misconception, I'm sorry, I think I just interrupted you.
No, that's, I, just wondering if we could, if by raising that levy, we could give us more of a cushion.
A very common misconception with school funding is the connection between a increased levy rate to drive more dollars into the general fund, and having more spending authority. There is a disconnect there between the two, and I've heard it said multiple times by people in the public arena, and they continue to misstate the connection between those two, there is really no connection. When you finally fund the full spending authority of the district, adding more levy and more property tax dollars does nothing to increase spending authority. So in this case, the question is, can we increase the levy rate and drive more dollars to pay for assessment? And the answer is no, not from a spending authority standpoint, it isn't going to matter. And I want, kind of come back to key concern regarding a 15% balance, and I want to remind, remind you, remind our community and our taxpayers, that we have been the victim, maybe I could have used a better word than victim, but it's the one that comes to my mind, a victim with the across-the-board reductions of state funding three times in the last 12, the last 12 years. So each of those times, we have, in the middle of a fiscal period, a reduction across the board, which costs the district millions, and you can't adjust for that until the subsequent fiscal period. This is the key reason why 15% with those kind of understandings doesn't seem to be a little bit too high. I guess it's all a matter of perspective, but it's, it's nice to have those resources in, you know, just in case.
It, it reduces our need to borrow, too, which is, which is really important.
That's correct.
But still, you know, there's, there's a point where we gotta be careful politically, and I'm in complete agreement where we're at, I've been a part of those cutbacks, and if we hadn't had it, we would have been extremely negative.
What will be the, this, fair, what would be the, happen with the rate of cash, both with the 67 cents factored in for the additional capital? Want some of that cash even weight less slowly with that 67 cents?
Well, again, the fund balance of the general fund trajectory is, is very high, and that is absorbing that 67 cents. I'm not sure if I'm really hitting your question at all.
Mary?
So Brad, I know that there was a school district, maybe in the Quad Cities, I don't remember correctly, that was challenging the state legislature to increase spending authority, is that conversation dead, or is that still alive somewhere, and can we be a part of it?
I, I don't think it's alive in this session, I, I haven't followed that detail close enough, but I don't think there's a bill that's made it through the funnel such that that could be supported in this session.
Something that we should consider in our next legislative session, as far as advocacy?
Yeah, and you know, one of the-
Because we're not the only district in this situation.
I agree, I agree. And the, the sort of related thought there is, when Gary and I were meeting with legislators last Friday, that SAVE conversation is still in play, and for those that are following the SAVE conversation, that's peeling off a percentage of that tax as it comes in, and extend the time horizon, so it's 2029 now, extend the time horizon to something like 2049, but instead of doing it for water quality, as the governor has said, putting it back into equitable spending things, and one of the examples of a potential equitable spending thing would be that conversation with, that Art's trying to have out of Davenport. They're also talking about transportation, ELL or ESL, free reduced lunch, some kind of mitigator, but that's in the mix, too, so, yeah, but it's worth having some more conversation about.
Just one more thing, I think, Gary, at your legislative session on Friday, that maybe there were some graphs that were shared by Representative Reiser, I wonder if you could share those with us.
Ken, I don't have them with me, but I'll see that they get out.
Because I know he's proposing some concept to realign the, how, how we fund schools.
Right, and-
The funding formula.
Right, and my comment was going to be in it somewhat, we're, we're not gonna address school funding, I think, over all the, the mechanisms this session, but I think longer term, that's something that IASB, and, and as a local board, we need to push for, because we continue to see the defaults and the, and the, in the present funding system that we have, we can, we need to find a better system to, to do that, and I know Dr. Buck, and I think there are several other UENs looking at possibly, if we can't generate a, a better way of, of funding schools and take it out of the political arena.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so it's been recommended to the board that we approve publication of the fiscal year 2016-17 budget to include not to exceed levy rate of $15.38056, and notice of a public hearing to be held at the Tuesday, April 12th, 2016, board meeting at 5:30 PM. This is a voice vote, so all of those in favor of that signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the same, staying, the motion passes. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of publication, scheduling of the public hearing. Steve, back to you.
Yes, thank you, President Lartery. The second item is the, the amended budget, if you look at the page BA 16246, that pertinent fact sheet has a matrix of numbers, and I provide a anticipated fiscal '16 actual number in the far-right-hand column. This is something that we do every year, the amended budget is in the center column of those numbers, it is high, it is 10% higher than, than the anticipated budget, so that we don't exceed the published budget, and our audit folks like that, we don't get any dings in our audit report- We don't get any dings on our audit report by not exceeding that published budget. I don't expect that we're going to come close to that, but we, this, we do this every year. No property tax impact whatsoever. This is simply changing what I would consider to be a continuous budgeting process. We update our budget continuously. And so in the far, the left-hand column is the original budget that we had a year ago. So probably said more than I need to here, but I would ask for your support here to take this public, also publish this in the newspaper, schedule a public hearing on the 12th of April, and then have approval, take action on this after.
Any questions or comments about this? All right, seeing none, it's been recommended to the board that we approve publication of the fiscal year 2015-'16 budget amendment and scheduling a public hearing for Tuesday, April 12th, 2016, at the board meeting, 5:30 PM. This is a voice vote, so all of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, the same? Motion passes. And we'll move on to approval of the resolution for sale of refunding of bonds. And Steve, that's yours as well.
Thank you very much again, President Lavery. This is really a nice piece. This is really about generating resources for kids. And this is a million-dollar fund generation in net present value terms, and what we're doing essentially is refunding a refunding bond, if that sounds a bit convoluted, but that's what we're doing here because interest rates continue to lower from where they were in 2006. And so there's a attached resolution here. I would ask for the board to consider approving the resolution so we can continue moving forward with a bond sale, which is actually scheduled for the 12th of April, and we would take action as a board to review the summary of bond bids at that meeting, and then presumably have the board take action on the, the best low bid of bonds on the bond sale.
Any questions or comments? It's a great opportunity to save the district a lot of money, so thank you. And so this, this does require a motion second, and it's a roll-call vote, so somebody like to move that we approve this?
Aye, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterlein?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
President Lavery.
Aye. So the, the board will be moving into two separate meetings. One is an exempt meeting to discuss strategy session for union and non-union employee groups. And this is just information that will be going into that exempt session first, followed by a closed session for the evaluation of professional competency in accordance with the Code of Iowa, Section 21.51I. And for moving into the closed session, we need to have a motion second and a roll-call vote. So Keith, would, do you like to read that motion?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, March 28, 2016, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual requests a closed session as provided in 21.51I of the Iowa Code.
Is there a second? Second. The roll-call vote.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterlein?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Lavery.
Move that, the regular meeting is closed, and then we can choose our two motions on that or the other one, or it's exempt. Okay, yeah. So we'll go ahead and close the regular meeting and move into our exempt session and then the closed session.